Make a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. Um, it was Barbara and Derek. Okay, all of those that approve the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. Communications with parent and citizens and staff. Loretta? Thank you for waiting, by the way.
You're welcome. Good evening, my name is Loretta Johnson and I am the president of the Para Professional and Bus Driver Unit. We are sorry to intrude on your meeting, but the para professionals and bus drivers in this district would like to say a few things. We have four members speaking, Amy Laporte James, Mike Lee, Heather Jaquith, and myself. We will try not to take up much of your time, but we have some issues that need to be voiced. We would like to leave once we are finished.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy Laporte James and I've been a para educator for the past seven years. I've worked as a para educator mostly at Otter Valley. I've worked in middle and high school. I have also worked a few months at Lothrup. I wanted to mention tonight how dedicated and hardworking all of the paras are at this district. I am blessed to work with some at OV. All of us have stepped up during COVID and worn many hats, never knowing what was coming next. We do this every day and we do this for the students that we serve in this community. We all have backgrounds of experience and many have associates or bachelor's degrees. All of us provide the students with consistency, nurturing, and support throughout the academic school year. During COVID, after some students were brought back into the building, many of us, including myself, ran pods of students. The teachers would provide the students with lessons and directions through Google meets and we were there to help the students with their coursework. We did not help with one subject, we helped with many subjects, including math, English, history, and science. When the rest of the students were brought back to school and Wednesdays were asynchronous, the teachers and students were home and para educators still had to come into schools and work with students through Google meets. When the students were fully remote, many parents helped with delivering lunches to students. Many parents, paras helped special educators to support students on Google meets when we were fully remote. We are there for the students day in and day out, helping to support them, listening to them, and helping them realize they can be successful even when they have struggles. We are these students' supports and cheerleaders. We are actively engaged with helping these students succeed with their academic careers. I see the value we have every day as we help many students in this community. We only hope that you will see the value that we provide for these students. We all deserve to be respected and valued for the work that we do and that we take pride in. This is extremely important work that needs to be recognized and compensated for. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Mike Lee, I've driven bus from northeast for fifteen, going on sixteen years. Um, I'm gonna share with you a little about safety from the school bus perspective, from the transportation perspective. Driving a school bus is all about safety, it's job one. In a nutshell, our job is to safely deliver children to from school, field trips, and sporting events. What does the job and safety look like on a school bus in reality? Imagine a classroom filled with mixed age kids seated closely together. Now turn your back on all sixty-five of you. Rely only on a mirror in your spidey senses to know what is going on as the only adult on the bus behind those government-acquired highback seats. Now manage them while driving defensively in heavy traffic with an increasing amount of distracted drivers on the road as our students proceed to touch, bite, kick, punch, hit, move randomly, spit, have nosebleeds, and vomit while the bus is in motion or not. All this while managing traffic outside the bus in the most dangerous areas, unrelenting traffic, and loading and unloading zones where a driver must remain ultra-focused. Where a driver must remain ultra-focused so children outside the bus remain safe. World War III may be going on behind you, but you have to be focused when you've got students crossing in front of that bus. So, only then can you deal with the latest catastrophe that has gone on behind you while making a bus stop. All this while making stops to pick up and discharge students at the correct locations. And grades K through three, the driver must know the child's grade level and the appropriate designated person to pick the child up. So, you must have all this in your head while performing these other duties and you must see the right parent guardian who is authorized to receive the child. Otherwise, the child must be returned to the sending school after the run is completed. Okay, so current bus safety concerns that are affecting us currently, I'm gonna go through a list of them. Lack of school staffing has, on the bus radio in the afternoon while we're discharging students. They are our lifeline. But we have kids that we can't deliver because we haven't got a parent, or we don't have the right parent, custodian, or no one is there at all. It's all too common these days. And it is unclear on what, who, when, where, why, or how. We need the schools be able to tell us, okay, what do we do next? Are we bringing them back to you? If no one answers the radio, we can't bring them back to the school to no one. Okay? So, you know, what? If there ever a crash, a medical or other type of emergency, there is no one from that school that has the proper info or resources that we need to dispatch or launch the right emergency response, whether it's police, fire, AMS, or otherwise. After 3:15 or 3:30, some schools have no one staffing bus radios. Most bus runs last until 3:30 to 4:00 PM, some a little later, some a little less, depending on the day. Neshby and Barstow are the exceptions. They usually have someone always staffing the radio until those times, which we are thankful for. And sometimes they can call the other school, but if there's no one to answer the phone, or the phone system, we're already on night call, there's no one answering. But we have a lot of trouble with OCA, Lothrup, and OV. Okay, students that have behavioral or other known issues that have one-on-ones in the school setting but are being put on a school bus with no monitor or no aide, and you already have sixty-some odd other kids, and with all this other stuff going on, it's adding to an already hectic and dangerous mix with other students on the bus. Recently, due to monitor shortages, along with bus drivers, we're having trouble getting enough monitors to fill those positions. We're forced to, some of these students have been forced to ride alone that normally have a one-on-one on the bus. And so, sometimes a monitor has to be moved to a more critical student, leaving that student and the driver dependent themselves. Drivers are no longer given informal training on which students may have allergic reactions to bees and other allergic reactions. Bees are very common on a school bus, especially this time of year, windows are open, bees fly in. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I have to stop the bus before we leave school, kill a bee, or extract it from the student area. We no longer know if students are allergic, have reactions to anything, any sort of anaphylactic reactions or seizures, etc. Therefore, no proper response actions can take place in a reasonable amount of time, especially if we cannot rechange school staff on the radio. Elementary schools not getting, putting all the students, the right students on the right buses at dismissal time. This has been an increasing thing over the last few years. Therefore, calling buses back to the school, creating unsafe situations for students on the bus and drivers as well. Every time you turn a bus around in an unauthorized, unfamiliar turnaround location, you run a much higher risk of accidents and injuries. This creates more pressure on the drivers doing an already difficult job. Remember, you've got sixty-some odd kids behind you that want to go home and all of a sudden you've changed direction. And some of them don't do well in those situations. This makes the bus route drop times much later as well and makes the link-up times with parents and other buses later as well. Causes a big chain reaction. For instance, one of our buses that leaves Neshby links up to OCA, which meets other buses so they can change kids that go to Neshby onto a bus that might take them to Whiting or might take them to Subter. So if you turn a bus around because, you know, we can't seem to get the right kids on the right buses at the right times, then you've got another chain reaction. You've got two or three buses waiting at OCA, as an example, for these, for these shows. And to follow up with that, elementary schools putting a student, usually but not always, a young student, eighth grade K through three on the wrong bus. We've had that happen a couple times recently. And usually, if you have, you catch them, you can catch them at the door and say, hey, who are you? I don't know you, and where's the note? Sometimes that, you know, you're dealing with World War III and you're loading a bus. People are handing you notes and you get, one gets by you. And next thing you know, you, the school's calling, looking for a bus, a kid that should have been on bus so-and-so is actually on your bus. And you may not know it till you have to stop the bus, search the bus, find the kid, report back, and then you gotta figure out how this kid is gonna get home. At this point, the parents are really irate. And the school is scared, the drivers are scared, you know, everybody's concerned with this situation. So, um, a lot of times, like I said, we don't know this has happened until the school calls because the parents called them and is panicked or irate. Typically, the child, you know, if they're real young, they'll say, oh yeah, I live by Suzie, by the maple tree. Okay, now, you know, trying to figure that one out. So typically, the child cannot tell you where they live, their bus stop, or even where the bus usually ride. This often causes young children great distress and they panic and cry when the drivers, while the driver and the school try to figure it out. With the busload of other intolerant children that don't really grasp the gravity of the situation, parents become scared, impatient, mad sometimes, belligerent to bus drivers and school staff, especially when at first the child hasn't been located. Which sometimes takes a while for buses to be stopped and checked for the missing student as well as at the school. This typically also means that the bus has to go off route to return the child to school, creating unsafe situations for students. As I explained again, turning a bus around in an unauthorized, unusual location is never a good idea. Some people do not like to turn around in the driveway. Some places are not safe for buses to be, you know, forty feet long and you're trying to back into somebody's driveway. It's not a good thing. So, this creates more pressure again on the drivers doing an already difficult job. Also making bus route drop times much later, making link-up times with parents and other buses as well, same thing, big chain reaction. At bus dismissal time here at OV, due to recent changes in the brand and PD staff, a new chief and several new officers, there have been no traffic control at 2:35 to get all the buses out on Route 7 north and south to go to their respective elementary schools. Since we don't have a school resource officer, they used to handle that. Sometimes Mr. Avery would wear a vest and go out and direct traffic. But I don't know if no one's reached out to the police department or they have declined our request. I don't know exactly the crux of that situation. However, buses are, have to take it on to themselves to become blockades for the other buses in the middle of traffic on Route 7. Some of them have school kids on them. Tell me who's gonna be responsible when that accident happens. So, one is stopping traffic from the north, one is stopping, pulling out in front of traffic, stopping and letting the other buses go out because traffic is so heavy on Route 75. So, and again, somebody else's children on these buses. So, and the last thing that I have on my list, and I'm mentioning licensed professionals or teachers specifically because this is one of the experiences that I've had, but it's happened everywhere. People not realizing that red lights mean stop even in a schoolyard. We've had several licensed professionals, but they're late getting to work. We run a line on Otter Valley and we have to wait till the doors open in the back where we can release children. Once we start releasing children, we are required by law to run red lights. And when we're unloading and loading children, red lights have to be on on the school bus. It's for safety, it's the ultimate. And they are ignoring me and driving around these buses with red lights flashing, endangering children discharging from the bus, ignoring the danger and the violation of motor vehicle law because they are late, impatient, or ignorant of the law and unwilling to listen. Right now, I believe it's a two-hundred-and-seventy-something dollar fine with five points on your license if you get caught running school bus red lights. And that goes for anywhere's, you can go around them. The only person that can direct you around with red, school bus red lights is a police officer. So, you know, this loading zone, and it's not just here. It's everywhere. Chris can testify. We're having a lot of trouble on the highways with distracted driving. It's gotten exponentially worse with COVID. And myself, they have, in Vermont, you know, a lot of recreational use of marijuana. Well, they have not made it legal to drive with it, however, we're finding that that is also the case of adding to the distraction. I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mike.
Good evening. My name is Heather Jaquith and I've worked for this district for twenty-four years as an intervention specialist. I've been moved many times over the years to focus on intensive behavioral needs at different schools and have had exposure to all age groups. It has always been a challenge to maintain a quiet, focused, calm learning environment in the confines of a traditional classroom where there are many different personalities and value systems converged into one area. There are times and situations that have required alternative settings for certain types of learners and quiet spaces for others. This is especially true for some populations that experience different levels of disabilities or hardships in their home lives that we have no control over. As a system of support, we try to meet the needs of children on every level while simultaneously attempting to teach helpful skills and practices that will enhance their quality of life throughout school and into adulthood. Every student that we work with has different levels of tolerance for various things throughout the day. And coping skills can vary from ignoring the adult, yelling, refusing, running away, swearing, and physical aggression. Unfortunately, it can be very difficult, sometimes close to impossible, to de-escalate a child who is acting out in a physical way. While most or all of our schools have people employed to aid in the de-escalation process, there is no guarantee that these people will be available at all times. Many times, there will be more than one child escalating at the same time and our resources are stretched way too thin to meet the need. Therefore, that will leave one staff or on their own or more, which can lead to injury. There are also some students that have multiple physical needs that require staff to take care of needs of daily living, such as toileting, teeth brushing, and cleaning up after activities or meals. This requires a closer proximity to the student than staff might normally have and can expose staff to germs, physical aggression, and injury from lifting and supporting a child who is being uncooperative. This year, there have been quite a number of injuries resulting from physical aggression towards staff. And it is time for the board to recognize that these scenarios are coming on in our schools. We have all been overworked and understaffed since COVID and yet, these support professionals continue to show up and do the best they can for children. We ask that you take our concerns for the safety of our staff seriously. Thank you.
Okay, I'm the last one. Again, my name is Loretta Johnson. I am the president of the Para Professional and Bus Driver Association and I've been a para educator in this district for twenty-one years. Before I start with what I'm going to talk about, I will let you know that our para professionals and bus drivers value safety as being a priority. Once I am done speaking, I will be handing you a petition signed by a majority of our employees. The petition strongly encourages safety to be a priority. I want to call upon the value of our support staff employees. We work tirelessly, day in and day out. This year, many of our para professionals have been called upon to be substitute for, to be a substitute for teachers. Some OVUU paras have served nearly as much or more than they have done the job that they were hired for. While the shortage of staff is all too common, we believe that we should receive more compensation than an extra one dollar an hour. When professional staff substitute in these same positions, they receive an extra sixteen dollars an hour. This leads us to think that we are not as valued as our professional staff counterparts. Along with substitute pay is consideration of our actual wages. We are very aware of the percent increase that was offered professionals and to non-unionized support staff. We ask that consideration be made for a comparable wage increase that does not include decreasing our work year by five days. Para professionals and bus drivers rely on their paycheck to be roughly the same amount bi-weekly so they can pay their bills and help support their families. Non-uniform amounts are not reliable for many of these employees that live paycheck to paycheck. These employees may not be able to remain employed in this district if the pay structure they relied on the whole time of employment were to change in this year. We are currently short-staffed. Can the district afford to lose more of us? Our question, can you run these schools without para professionals and bus drivers? If you are unsure about what we do to earn our pay, perhaps you could shadow any of us for even a few hours. We are valuable school system employees and we wish that we were treated as such. Thank you.
Thank you, Loretta. Seriously, folks, please do help yourself to some cake if you'd like. Is there anyone here for Communications with the Board? No? Okay, we're gonna move on. So, in light that we have a couple of people here to present to us, we're going to move the Tech Addict and Muslumoo program presentations up next, so. Josh will be first. Josh is going first, okay?
Okay, I have prepared for you, actually I didn't prepare at all, a slideshow. The slideshow is quite lengthy, so I'm not gonna speak to each slide, it'll just be on a loop. After that sobering discussion, this is not so sobering. Muslumoo is a bright spot in school. A part of the Otter Valley community since 2007. I was young and starry-eyed back then. And, you know, I could take so much time to talk about the program. It's quite complicated, actually. But I have two groups daily, a ninth grade group and I have an upper level group for two blocks, each is for two blocks, half a day. And we are, we are immersed in Hawk Hill and off-campus, as you see here, that there's a climber. These are all pictures taken from our field. There's a climber right there. And we're heterogeneous. The program was born out of an at-risk program. And I realized quickly that I could affect more students if we were heterogeneous. And I've done that. It's, everything that we learn is applicable, it's authentic, it's cross-curricular, and it has a healthy dose of service learning. Here, every unit, there's about five units per year. Every unit, students have an assessment period and we invite an elementary school class to come to the classroom, or our classroom, as you see here, and teach a workshop. Really, we have a three-pronged assessment of our students per unit. One is our presentation of learning. This is totally organic. Students come up with their own presentation, so every year it looks different. You may have read about us in the newspaper some years back. We've had a lot of presentations highlighted. Students have built museums, built climbing walls. Sometimes individuals do certain performances for us. And then we have the elementary outreach, which is a one-day workshop. And then we have the expedition, which is when we head into the field for two, three days. It used to be more, but I'm older now. So, two or three days where we actually live in the dirt. So, some of our, well, all of our expeditions are very exciting. Some of the more exciting ones are, I hate to even build a hierarchy of them. We climb Mount Washington via Honeybee or Bean. We go rock climbing in the Adirondacks, sleeping, you know, with the climbers right beneath the cliffs. We do a twenty-four-hour solo where I am in the field with students, but they are separated out and they have to survive for the night. And really, the essence, what I'd like to portray, I guess, is that, you know, teaching is difficult, it is. It's incredibly rewarding. And I have unmeasurable struggles. But I, I have learners that are invested. And I'll tread lightly here. The students oftentimes are not invested in the rest of the school. And they come to Muslumoo daily, excited, even on fire to learn. The units, the unit supports the learning. It supports authentic learning. And students can use learning almost immediately. And really, in the end, they don't recognize that they're learning until they actually reflect on it. And so, with so little time, I have so much to say, but I'd really just like to open up just for a couple of questions that you have.
Questions? Devin?
Thanks, Devin.
Do you know how many students you've had?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention. I have twenty freshmen and I took twenty upper level this year. I'll never do that again. I was, obviously, I had a serious medical event and that was partly to blame.
So, is that forty a year?
Twenty a year, yeah. Twenty, that's for the freshman group. For the upper level group, it's, I say ten, but I always let a couple more in.
So, thirty a year?
Thirty, thirty-two a year, yep. Yep.
So Josh, I've told you this personally, I want to say it in public and get it on the record that I think you're a miracle worker and that you are doing absolutely necessary and wonderful work with these kids who behave better as a result of your influence. My question is, what can we do for you?
You know, Muslumoo came to be kind of by way of You know, Muslumoo came to be kind of by way of an accident, actually. We have been very supported by the board. But infrastructurally, the school is not really set up to handle us. And we have done all kinds of creative things to work around that. So, really, at this time, I mean, obviously, there are loads of problems. You know, staffing being one, the fact that we're in the basement, which adds a mold problem, gear storage, a noise problem. Bless him, but Devin's loud. And so, that's a struggle. And also, I would say, transportation has been a giant problem. Nothing against any of the drivers, but we are very different. And so, transportation actually has resulted in, at times, borderline professional violation. I mean, I come from a world of outdoor education and recreation, right? And the school adopted us, and we have to play by the school's rules.
Right.
So, that sometimes is cumbersome. And really, my personality is, I find ways to deal with it, and I don't make a big fuss about it. And that largely has worked, but the hope is that in time, maybe, we'll get what we need.
I'll follow up.
Yeah, go ahead, Natalie.
Thank you, Josh. My kids love you. If you were to pick one priority out of the things you listed, what would it be?
Transportation.
That's what it sounded like, yeah.
Yeah, but it's followed by a close second. Not that I dislike my room, I don't dislike it at all. It has easy access to the outside, but, you know, it's not a classroom. It isn't.
What would be a classroom? What do you mean by that?
Oh, what I mean is that it was made, I think, as the original welding shop. And so, it doesn't have the soundproofing that other classrooms have, or the mold is really, really quite an issue, gear storage and things like that.
How many years have you been there? And what have you seen in terms of the way that kids have changed over your time?
Oh, man. Oh, boy, that's quite a question. I've been there, I've been with Muslumoo for 17 years, or 18, I can't really remember. And, you know, at first, I had the bad of the bad, really. I hate to use that word, but I had really at-risk kids. So, there really isn't a comparison from then to now. But if I compare when we became heterogenously grouped, I would say, kids are exponentially more distracted than they used to be, you know, with phones. And I have to, you know, take probably the first couple months of school, I call it progressively unlearning, to unlearn those habits. And also, I would say, the students I have today, they have very little trust in the process, in education. And they have to learn to trust me and to be vulnerable and vulnerable enough to challenge themselves, actually. I think I did a pretty good job there, yeah.
Jim?
How many, if you know, applicants do you have? Because I'm thinking you must have much more than 32.
I don't have much more, actually, but, you know, once again, I'll just say 18 years, I guess I get a little overdosed. The way that Carnegie Unis work is relatively cumbersome in my work, because a student has to get so many English credits, so many social studies credits, whatever it happens to be. And they spend a lot of time in Moose per day, so that kind of limits what we get. Plus, we have largely shaken the old stereotype. But, you know, there are members of the, you know, there are parents, there are students that want their kid to have a traditional schooling. And I don't fault them for that. So, I waitlist probably about just under 10 in each program a year. You know, really, what that comes down to is a maturity level. And the program is truly, really heterogeneous, where I have career-bound students and I have students that are on the fast track to college. I would say that I lose the top-tier students, per se, anybody that's applying to Yale or Harvard. I don't usually get them. But I have, you know, plenty of grads that have gone through the program from UVM and Utica and so on and so forth. And I don't have the level of student that I used to. I still conscientiously take about, half my students are struggling in the regular classroom, either academically or behavior, usually both. So, I kind of lost my train of thought there, but.
Other questions?
I have. My son is in the Little League World Series in Middlebury, so I'm gonna run out of here right now.
Yes.
Thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
It's been a while since I've been in front of the board, and I didn't really realize it. There's so many new faces, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay, Devin, you're up.
Yay.
Okay. Hi. Heart was hard to follow, Bill. And yes, I am loud.
It's coming.
I don't have it on the loop.
Neither did he.
Oh.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's followed or not, but I'm happy that you're at the loop, right? So, it's been a year. Thank you for having me back. Welcome to all the new board members. And, you know, it's still, I assume it's always going to be, but it's always a pleasure to present to you guys. And just want to let you know kind of what we're doing on the other side of the basement. Been up to a lot this year. And how do you want to do it? Slide?
Yeah, point to me or look at me or, yeah.
Hi.
Because I don't know what you're gonna say next.
I came up with this a few years ago, and I think it very much encompasses what we've been trying to do. And I very much say "we" because we continue to grow students, interest in parents, board members, and that "we" component of is so important. It's not my shop, it's the kids' shop. And they are, I'm gonna tell them how to keep it, hopefully, keep it clean. Right now, it's not so much that way. But what we're trying to do is fill in a pre-technical void that a lot of our students don't get. And Josh's lower Moose is a perfect example of a pre-existing program that has done a fantastic job of springboarding kids into their futures, and that's, we want to be part, that's what I'm trying to help build here as an ecosystem where we're doing it. So, positives, start there. Continued support from you guys. Positive press in several local papers, keep popping up in some pretty good ways, some of the projects we've been working on. It's so much fun being here. I was saying to Jim, you know, three years ago, you guys hired me and I came home. So, this is the longest I've ever had a job in my adult career. So, thanks for that, not to make any of you scared, but this is where I intend to be.
You're not sleeping here yet.
Yeah, that is an ongoing joke. If anyone sees me carry a cot downstairs, it's time for an intervention. Excited, engaged students. We've been working, things are getting cleaned and organized. We're getting towards what you would consider an industry-standard shop. And we've been growing our tool capacity and our opportunities for kids, 7 through 12. Wow, that's a lot smaller up there than I anticipated. So, this is all the good news, the super budgetary stuff that you guys didn't have to worry about. Stephen Eastman, Naylor Green, Amanda and Chris Locke, Colin Barrett, Richard and Chad Rayom, I don't even know how to board fundraisers, that didn't sound like the same thing, but. And then Kate Cook, an estimated $6,000 in additional non-budgetary donations for different projects. Some of them aren't going to be utilized in the way I'd hoped, because timetables get weird, but that's more good news. And then Markowski, Markowski Excavating donated, oh, sorry. Our estimate is somewhere between $5,000 and $10,000 for our dig-it program that we ran this year, between time, equipment, and other resources. And we also, the National Guard came in as well, so giving six young men an experience that ended up getting them certified in, they got their OSHA-10 certification, CPR, five of the six got CPR, six of the six got first aid, they got time over Markowski's reclamation pit, actually running heavy equipment. And then, we had one senior go because of, partially because of OMEA came here, but also because of going to OMEA. He'll be working for them starting 27th, I believe. My understanding is that we also have another student that'll be working for Dave Markowski, an 11th grader that'll be working on the ag side for Markowskis. And then, one possibly, one who's investigating OMEA for future, and then two that have other career plans. So, a resounding success for our first year. And these are awesome pictures. I think I'm funny. So, an amazing experience for these guys. And thank you for, Gene and Kristen, and thank you, Brenda, for helping and for you guys as well, supporting that. But the lifting between talking to Vizbit and figuring out the how you make sure this happens safely, logistically. I do want to echo Josh, and transportation has been very hard. I'm going to clean my truck thoroughly tomorrow, actually Friday, because I've been transporting the kids to the pit and over to Montpelier. We did do our due diligence for that, making sure field trip forms were filed, and we were proceeding through all correct channels, logistics, and insurance needs. But we actually ended up, my mom is a health teacher at Middlebury, and she took a day off to also, so she is now momma carpack to three, to six of these guys. These are our current students, former students, and this isn't everyone, these are just different people who've shown up, really, really gone out of their way on weekends and day-to-day stuff and after-school, and have made the progress possible. And it's been, it's been a pleasure to work with them. And I just, this is how you build community. It's not in the "I hope," it's in the "doing." So, here's another number. It looks a lot bigger than it is, because we haven't spent $100,000 of it yet. And unfortunately, the Rowland Foundation won't let me spend any of that on infrastructure. I asked, and then I asked again, and there was some begging. But FFA grant, we now have a chapter of the FFA. We took two students over to Vermont Technical College to compete in the Small Engines Mechanics Competition this year. We placed last, because we were supposed to have three, we had two. But next year, we're gonna have a small engines class. It was a pleasure to do that, but this was possible because of starting this FFA chapter. And then, we got a $5,000 grant from the FFA to buy six toolboxes, six engines, and the various other hand tools that are required to have this happen.
Devin? I'm sorry, what is FFA?
So, Future Farmers of America is probably how most of you are familiar with it. It's gone through a few other things. I believe now in its current iteration, it is the FFA Association, or National FFA Association. So, I think they, in essence, dropped the, it's a, what we'd call a career and technical student organization. So, it is a leadership training aid that students, and as part of that coursework, they'll tear down a small engine, and getting down to the welding part, they'll be introduced to welding. We have a functional area as soon as we get one other air handling system in, but I'll go into that in a little later detail, which is not gonna cost anything. Good question about the Light the Spark Grant.
Yep.
So, that equipment's currently unusable, right? The Light the Spark Grant equipment is usable. Is it usable in the school at the moment? Right this moment, no, but we have the capacity to do that. And what's it gonna take to get that up and running for our students? Over the summer, we're gonna move a smoke eater from the wood shop into there. That will, I actually have a timeline of all that. Okay, I'm sorry. So, Vermont Community Foundation, Community Grant, apparently, I also don't know how to lowercase letters. This is for equipment. Jason Davis and Katie Davis and Sandy Shequinn ran a small cohort to pilot a recovery program for some credit for a few students through this grant for martial arts, through their adaptive martial arts association that they're associated with. We got a bunch of Makerspace supplies, additional 3D printing capacity, PLA, stuff like that. Walter Surf, I guess that was, sorry, additional hands tools, some initial robotics stuff, so we can continue to expand and experiment and see what kids want to play with and learn about. The Light the Spark Grant, $14,000 in welding equipment. And to support this, private donations were also used, from that $6,000 list, about $1,000 was used to, between fundraising and private donation, to redo one of the rooms downstairs to house that. It was our wood storage and a few weekends and stuff. So, that's, and then the Rowland Foundation is going to work on expanding this and answering a lot of the big questions, like how long? Like, I see a lot more kids than Josh, which will, is this the one? No, this is, this was what I, like, you guys probably have heard some of the grant stuff I apply for. My goal is not to have to match funds, not to incur other costs, making sure that there is reporting that is reasonable. I'm not going after something that's, so we just made sure that it was solidified, so that if someone asks, "Well, are you gonna go for this one?", it's a relatively easy yes or no. How's the application go? How does, how does that stuff happen? So, if any of you are interested in that. All right, so, Gene, two long, or, next one. So, this is the number, as far as things. So, this year, I saw 137 students. Four courses offered, there's a little bit of duplication, but not much. Four courses, woodworking, industrial technology, steam, history and technology, electric motor, eighth-grade tech ed, and then dig-it, introduction to heavy equipment operation. We have a $6,000 annual budget, and I took a three-quarter time position, now I'm over full-time. I don't know how I did that, but thank you for offering me those contracts, I appreciate it. And this is just a further breakdown, also getting cool pictures with our new drone of the school. So, let me know when budget time and the books come out for different things, and we can give you some awesome 4K high-definition shots. This is just an overview, again, just how things break down, and we're gonna dive into this, really kick the tires on it to make sure that this is how we want to continue to offer. really kick the tires on it to make sure that this is, this is how we want to continue to offer tech ed here. And making sure it's meeting the needs of our students, the needs of the community, and also what following best practices. So the question of challenges, power management, how do we plug things into the wall? Dust collection. The wood shop teacher that was at Middlebury had to retire early because of breathing too, this was years ago, this was when I was in high school. But his lungs became funky, and I don't want to take that as a way, also the kids, but I'm down there more, so I don't want to die young. But I'm working on not being able to die young because I'm getting older. Issues in the classroom, some of those of you who attended Otter Valley, they're the same desks. Really, they are. General aesthetics, making sure that kids are proud of the, like, when they walk in there, they're like, this is home, this is awesome. Making sure that we're updating paint and stuff appropriately, technology issues. You know, if we're going to be using something in the 21st century, we need to be making sure that we're using industry standard stuff. And if the Defense Department uses it, and Otter Valley Union High School can't, don't worry, we're not launching like missile, we haven't gotten there yet. I mean, we're not going to go there. Right, Brenda? Sorry, Brenda. But the reality of the situation is we have to make sure, again, best practices, industry standards are guiding light. Yes, we need to make sure we are applying HIPAA and FERPA and all those others. But there's pieces of software and hardware that, having access to them, even in some cases are free and we're shut down from them. As I said, it's not saying that I'm right and everyone else is wrong. It's having, being able to have those meaningful conversations to see, oh, okay, it was this easy thing. Now we've got it. And some of it is also, going back to the power management, we went from not being one-to-one to being one-to-one. And I'm lucky, I have a lot of extension cords downstairs. There are many students who come not ready with a charged laptop. And we transitioned to having, having a need to use the Chromebooks. And I not, there is no judgment on whether or not a kid is able to charge a computer at home. But not being set up for, a classroom not being set up for that is very difficult. So we have, we basically have a paperweight that has been district issued at that point. So figuring out how to do that, and it's not just my classroom. And then we're working on organization, storage, and continuing on for that, which has been a great progression, but there is one big push that's going to happen hopefully pretty soon. All right, cool. So again, the air handling system, this is where we're at right now. Oh, I did forget. I can't even answer if that's the right thing. This is our, one of our most immediate concerns, is getting this updated and externalized from the shop. Josh is right, I am noisy. This makes it worse, and this is something I can't control, but it's not hooked up to everything. I've tried to get it hooked up to more stuff, but it sucks and it doesn't suck. Okay, that was my best dad joke. Okay, next one. This is just continuing through. Brenda and I and Jim met for approximate costs for this. I'm going to be upfront, and I think I said this to you, is that this is an estimate, we need to do, continue doing the due diligence for it. It's making sure it has a place to be housed, making sure that it is the right fit, the right size for what we're asking it to do, so that longevity, so that, you know, right now, the gold standard is about 60 years. So if we can get 60 years out of this next unit, we're doing really well.
I have a question about this too. $10,000 for weather safe housing, is that for architecture, design, and bonded construction?
I think, no, that is, that is not. That is a question that further needs to be answered. That was, that was an estimate.
So what were you estimating for that?
That was, that was the estimate. I don't know where. I got, started down the road, and I need help to figure out, to get through the rest, the rest of the way. That was the shiny new one that I'm hoping for, but I'm not sure if it's the right size even.
So we approved $30,000 for the summer, is that for the air handling system?
I believe so. And I'm trying to make sure that I'm staying within my appropriate lane as much as I can, making sure that I'm going through Rich because he's been fantastic, but he has a very large backlog that he's working through. So yes, that's what it would be directed to, 15, my estimate was 15,000 for electrical to hopefully include some of the stuff that, to address some of the major issues that we are seeing. Because we're out of room in our panels downstairs. Some of them, you cannot buy a new breaker for. And that's a, that helps school, so by virtue of addressing that, it's not just, oh, like, we can do more here. It's, it brings the school up to a modern code. It look, looking at it from that perspective allows us to make sure that we are planning ahead, that there is capacity for expansion incrementally. And also, in reality, reduces the cost of future projects because one of the foundational aspects has been taken care of. These are a couple of things, continue working in tool storage. We got a bunch of funky doors in the basement, including Josh's, like, it makes this horrible noise when you open it. So, and then like, making sure it's easy to secure tools in the basement and stuff like that. So we're working on that. Welding shop in its current iteration, making sure the smoke detectors turned down. We're working on moving our flammables out of our paint storage area, our spray booth. And the reason for that is originally they were stored horribly, and that was the better choice. And now we're going to try to make sure that they have a really good, safe area to be stored.
Is this where you want to be?
Oh, yeah. This is just a little bit more detail on the power management. I put way too much up on the slide. It's basically saying what, like, it's setting us up for success. The shop will be safer, fewer tripping hazards, fewer tripping hazards, stuff like that. That's basically all it says. Classroom, as I said, 50, 60 years old, desks, storage, things are funky and not great. I've got a plan, Rich is waiting to receive it. And we'll see if current funds are able to handle that or if it's a larger question. Does that sound, is set, we want the kids to be proud when they walk in there. So this is, this is an example of a modern technical education classroom. Where you have, you know, it is a little bit more computer lavish, but you have flexible space. It's shiny, it's bright, it's happy. I've sounded like a kindergarten teacher, but that's okay. And ongoing dust extraction. At some point, we're going to need to replace the drill press desks again, shelving and storage. This is all stuff I had previously, and we're making progress on it. So this is, this is, this is back to Kevin's question. So this is where we're at with the welding shop. So this is what it looks like now. It was wood storage. And because of parents, kids, community members, a bunch of different people coming in and unsolicited $500 donations, and then me getting a really awesome refund because the floor isn't exactly how I wanted it. We started in November with doing that. A group of community members came in and we started a cleaning out process and building a better storage area, which you'll see in the future picture. We applied for the AWS Light of Spark Grant, and with the support of Jim Avery, Jean, and Bill Moore, and we had, we were able to get that. And that was $14,000 in welding equipment, which right now, as soon as we get that smoke eater in there, will be usable. That's phase one of this. Now, build out of it over, and I really want to make sure that we have a really good, solid plan for it. I've got spreadsheets with numbers, which has been, which have been evolving over time, to offer welding as a standalone precursor to either, hey, I'm interested in welding, I'm trying it out, or I want to go to Stafford, or I want to stay here and do welding and do college prep, or I just, I've got this thing, it's broken, and I really want to know how to stick it back together. All those kids, that's the big, that's a big lift. And that's, that is a engineered air handling system, updates to electrical, which, as I said, if we're thinking about it in a proactive manner, we're making sure that things are set up for expansion. April this year, we received that, we did an unboxing, we have, we had 18 people come through to see the shop. It was fantastic, had pizza and stuff like that. The rest of 2022, my plan is to develop that comprehensive plan. And, and, you know, whether it's, you know, money that, and I'm not, like, money that you guys think, hey, we should allocate this for this much, and we can talk to, there's another AWS grant, we will go for that, and if it doesn't work this time. And creating a comprehensive plan that we make sure that when we're ready to do it, we do it right. And that we do it safe, industry standard, and that the kids are going to, again, be proud of it, be ready. The idea is that we'll have capacity so we could host 12 kids at a time and possibly even community members at a later point for a burn. And then, this has been our process, we started in the upper left-hand corner. And I had seventh graders painting, we only got one parent complaint about paint on stuff, that was awesome. We cleaned it out, vacuumed it, washed it down, and they loved it. They were coming down and they were doing. It was, it was a great use of flex time, so seeing how other positive things in the schedule are able to affect non-structured time. And then this is where we got to and how we got to the last part. The next slide. And then that's what it looks like now. Well, it's a little bit messier because I got to clean stuff up, but. And then that's it, clean and purchase, and then first courses, you know, if everything goes right, 23, 24.
So will next year's seniors be able to use the smoke?
Yes.
What will they be able to do in there?
They'd be able to get a taste of welding, try it out. We have an augmented reality welder right now, I'm trying to figure out why part of it's not connecting, but that probably is just a switch I didn't figure out. Anyway. So they'll be able to use a plasma cutter, torches after July 1st. We have enough money in our fundraised account, which will allow us to purchase our year's lease, which will then go, be transitioned over to an accountant for expense for future years in my budgeting process for shielding gas and cutting gases for oxyacetylene. So we've got, we're in a good spot, we can use it, but it's not the end. And there are kids that are really excited about this. Like, I've got seventh graders coming down, day in and day out, and I'm having, guys, I need you to, like, once was good, but you got to do your other coursework. And they're, they're even up through 10th, 11th, and 12th grade are really interested in having welding as an option. And I think it's going to, when we are there and able to get back to actually where we started a few years ago, it's going to be really good for a lot of the kids. And then this is our other component. Within the next three to four years, almost every student will have been exposed to 3D printing and computer-aided design. Some against their will, but most enjoyed it a little bit-ish. But we're getting to the point where we're having kids as young as seventh grade coming down, asking to use the 3D printers and planning to build out with professional development and enough capacity that you could use it from everything from, hey, we're doing this play and we need a helmet that looks like this. Or I have a kid who wants to, or there's a teacher who wants, hey, this is a $400 piece, and you're like, no, it's not. That's $10 in plastic, and then we can, we can print it. Or it's like having the capacity where it's cross-disciplinary, it's not just about tech ed. It's about everyone coming and using this resource to be creative, to be, to push the limits of engineering, to push the limits of art. And it's a, it's a great capacity to have. And like, there are kids who just come down to print, like little doodads, and that's been supported by some of the grants that we have, and, but taking this and formalizing it, following the welding shop or co-concurrently, or however it works out, continuing to expand our capacity. So we actually have a 3D printer farm, professional development for teachers, and then also adding some type of CNC so we could out for a manufacturing class. And the crux of that manufacturing class, oh, sorry.
No, no, it's something with the.
Something with a speaker.
And the crux of that manufacturing class would probably be some type of autonomous vehicle. So not necessarily autonomous, but like remote control, like something, something that really gets them excited. And then that's what this looks like, what that 3D printer farm and CNC capability early on would look like. A CNC router with high-speed capabilities so we could cut aluminum or other soft metals, and that would be. And how that all looks at, looks out, this is what we did this year in terms of classes offered. And then coming up, I think this is my flow chart, which I really well know. This is just, that was an updated slide, new courses potential. I've pretty much gone over it. Most of this stuff is at a normal budget year over year. This is where I'm hoping to take things in terms of having a rotating catalog of classes. Everything may not be offered every year, but allowing us to have, we're trying to fill a pre-tech void. If you're attached to a career center, the kids get to try stuff out the day they walk in the door of that high school. Our kids have me, sorry. And the hope is that we will allow kids, and this is the focus of my role in the year, kids will have career-related experiences sooner, more completely, and be able to plan for their futures more effectively because of being at Otter Valley. I think that's what I did. Oh, and then there's drugs, future courses. Oh, and I'm doing the garden this year again. So any questions? Sorry, Josh is more dynamic, and I'm just kind of like, you know, I was probably a lawyer or something. And they're like, no offense, dad, you're lawyers, you're all.
Anyone have any questions for Devin?
So you made a list of new equipment you need, storage, classroom size, power, air handler, smoke eater.
Yeah.
What's your favorite of all those? I mean, if you could get the funding for something like that, which one would be the most important?
The most important, the, as much, my heart says one thing.
I'll give you two.
Okay, thanks. My lungs say definitely what you guys approved, making sure that that comes to fruition. My heart says, no, I've got a lot of weird pockmark scars. I'd love to see the welding sooner than later. But that is, as I said, a comprehensive planning. Because like, even, even if I was given the money today, I, there are too many question marks to make it happen. And also, the other thing is that we operate course catalog to course catalog. And by virtue of, we cannot shoehorn it in, we would blow up too many kids' schedules. And I really like our guidance department, they're awesome people. I don't want them coming after me if we tried to do that. Oh, sorry.
I, you referenced coordinating with other programs, and I know the Hannaford Career Center as well as Stafford, don't they both offer welding programs once you get into 11th grade?
So I've gone down and talked to Tony Bosnic. Oddly enough, I've been following him around during my career in some weird way. Not in some like really weird way, but just sort of, anyway, sorry. He, we are not trying to compete for this program. Hannaford doesn't actually offer a welding program. I worked there during the summer. They offer welding as a component to a bunch of different programs. Stafford offers a welding program and fabrication. So our kids, also Stafford is. So, our kids, also, Stafford is at capacity. Like, they've done a fantastic job, but that leaves our kids, or at least, my understanding is they're at capacity. As of two years ago, there were two seats, and they were in a second-year program, that was the last time I had any understanding of where they were actually at. So, the idea of, we are never going to compete with either of them. We're trying to fill the pre-technical space, which is getting kids interested, and when they, if they choose to go to a staffer, farther down the road. So, it's like anything, like, you show up with a little bit of pre-existing skill, and like, at least can orient in a timely manner, then you're going to have that much more of a robust learning experience. And the other thing is that, just imagine how much better students that go on to engineering or art coming out of Otter Valley would be if they were able to tack that on to their college prep. So, we're, we are, my goal is to operate in a space that we're not competing with everyone, we're just making ourselves better.
Anyone else?
I have a question about VOSHA.
Yes, me too.
How do we know that we're not in compliance? I mean, haven't they come in to take a look at anything?
I...
Or are we paying the fees?
I...
Because we're not in compliance?
I am not, I am not part of that process, so I can't not, from a knowledgeable standpoint, tell you.
Devin, did you say we're not in compliance with VOSHA?
I said it was a question, I don't, I don't know.
So, don't think we're not in compliance with VOSHA.
So, no, I didn't say that. It was like, I am not sure if we are, because that's not part of my...
But the person who does need to know if we are is Rich Vigu.
Right, and I'm not trying to...
The facilities director, right. And Brenda, are you paying any fees to VOSHA?
No.
Okay, there you go.
Because I know you can pay a fee, and you...
Yeah, and as I said, that's not part of my scope.
You would know if we were paying a fee.
No, it's Rich's job.
Yeah. All I was saying is, the only thing I put up there was, I don't know.
You're not involved, so you don't...
I'm not involved, I don't know.
So, I'm asking these people.
You can pretty much assume you are unless Rich tells you you're not.
A quick Google search on the air handler, OSHA, VOSHA, they don't actually certify or monitor air handling systems, however, they do set particular levels, right? So, I have no idea if we would be in compliance with that, but I think, it sounds like we probably are.
I have all confidence to say we are in compliance with VOSHA.
It doesn't look good when you look at the pictures, but it doesn't mean anything.
Well, we can be in compliance by paying fees, too, penalty fees.
Oh, no, no, no. VOSHA fines are gigantic.
You can, just kidding.
Okay, thank you.
Because I wanted to clarify what your answer to jam laws about your vision, and it sounds to me like, maybe, this is why I clarified it, the idea is that you're going to be able to give students an opportunity to participate in these kind of welding, 3D printing, any of that kind of stuff, that then they can take to Stafford or out into the work world, and they can step in and say, I'm a little bit ahead of everybody else because I've had this opportunity to do it.
Yeah.
You can do that at the younger age than...
Exactly.
11th grade, honestly, 11th grade, you go to Stafford during the wild, I can learn, have a taste of it at seventh, eighth, ninth grade.
Exactly. And I'll leave you with this. So, I had to speak at the Roland dinner, and does anyone remember Mythbusters?
Yes.
Not them, so, one of the early, one of the early episodes dealt with a chicken cannon shooting frozen chickens at the windshield of...
Airplane.
Airplanes, just to make sure that they would, I, a comedian soon after that, or one of the hosts of the show goes, I don't remember that job being available at my high school job fair. I want our kids to, because like, for me, like, I have, I have an inordinate amount of student debt, I was trying to figure out exactly what I was going to do, no one told me being a tech ed teacher was a possibility. I don't want the kid, I'd love the kids to be tech ed teachers as they want to be, but I want them to know what's out there. If it's outdoor ed with Josh, wilderness first responder, smoke jumper, engineer, CNC operator, welder, mechanical engineer, structural engineer, art, metal artist, costumer, any one of those things, set designer, contractor, electrician, mechanic, farmer. They're not going to, like, you know, they have all this information, but it's overload. So let's go shoot some chickens at the windshield of a, I promise I won't do that, but metaphorically, let's go shoot some chickens at the windshield.
We'll just get you some safety goggles.
The funny thing with the safety goggles, they steal them. Like, I can't keep safety glasses down there.
Thank you, Devin.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Devin.
Okay. So, that, so we're going to continue on the governance process section of our thing. End of your financial review and possible action, which we tabled from our June 2nd meeting. Do you have any updates to the $192,000, so it's still $192,000 surplus is what you're thinking?
Right, today was the last day of teachers working, so we have one more final payroll, so now I don't have to...
So, do we need a motion on the facilities? I mean, the, that surplus to either put in facilities or...
Yeah, so that's why I was asking the information, so that we can make a motion to do something with it.
I have to have one ready.
The recommended motion is on the agenda.
Don't panic, Charlene. I move to place this year's budget surplus in the facilities fund, and to authorize the, and to authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed $230,000 from funds presently in the facilities fund for, A, a design by an architect of a suitable structure adjacent to the school for the purpose of containing a modern shop vacuum system, and for the construction of said structure by a bond builder. B, necessary structural changes for storage, soundproofing, and mold abatement in the Musa Lamo classroom. C, necessary structural changes in the OV shop for classroom power management. D, the purchase of fire-rated welding doors and other necessary changes to create a suitable area sufficient for the use of OV's new welding equipment for the 2022-23 school year. E, other permanently fixed equipment necessary to 21st century tech ed, such as a programmable CNC router and metal lathe, which shall function as permanent facilities of the school until replaced. I'll text, I'll email it to you.
Second.
Discussion.
It's not, not everything on that list is allowable out of the Capital Reserve Fund. As I pointed out in the memo I sent to the board, it's not legal.
Well, we have a discussion from, this is from the records of, this is the OV meeting minutes from this March 5, 5/21, on page six. Six of seven, there's a discussion about facilities, and, let's see. That is very small. Yeah. Oh, sorry, it's page five. Lori Bertrand asked where Neshaby stands with the cafeteria tables and the paving, and whether it is $15,000 for five years. Ms. Fleming said that the tables are $12,000 for two years, and the paving would be over five years, and done section by section, because Neshaby needs a lot of paving. So if we were able to pay for library tables last year, and we're able to pay for vaping detectors in our bathrooms this year, which we just did a meeting so ago, certainly, something as heavy and permanent and solid and as nailed down as a metal lathe should count as facilities.
Natalie, you had your hand raised.
I'm just, I mean, you heard Devin do his presentation, and it sounded clear to me that if he were given the funds today, he wasn't prepared to implement them all at once, that he has a phasing plan, and that is what he wants to do, and this is his program, and that I feel like we should be following what the teacher wants, and not what your ideas are on what he might need. I appreciate your compassion for this. I have a son in Moose, I absolutely think this is needed. But as a board member, we are here to be objective and do what's best for the entire community. And putting all our funds into one program, to me, doesn't sound like that's fair, number one, and I feel like maybe your compassion and your personal, you know, you're a volunteer in that program, has maybe clouded your objectivity a little bit, and that we, as a group, need to think about what's best for the entire school. And we just have bus drivers here, and we just had parents who were saying they desperately want money, why would we give all of our money to this one program when the teacher has a phased program?
If I may respond, it's...
Does anybody else have anything to say first? Because I think everybody should have due diligence to say something. Pedro, go for it.
I agree. That's it. I agree.
You agree with?
With Natalie, like, I, yeah.
Okay.
Alexandra's up to...
Brett?
This mold thing that keeps being brought up, is this a real thing? Is it moldy down there?
I've never noticed.
If it is, why are we not doing something about that? That sounds...
So, this is new to me.
Yeah, it's not something that's been brought forward.
So, I'm typing, and that is, that is something I have not heard before, so I will follow up and let you know. I never heard of it.
Derek, I saw your hand up.
Yes, a question for Gene through the chair.
Sure.
You, your response was that some of these things were illegal, they're not allowable.
Allowable.
They're not allowable for the types of funds that we have available. Could you explain that a little bit more, any details?
I'll ask Brenda to speak to what the Capital Reserve Fund allows.
Okay.
So, I have to apologize, I didn't hear after BCDME, so I didn't hear all of that because of the pandemic. So, I'll talk more generally to what is allowed in the facility funds, and I'll remind you that we do have this conversation annually, as we plan for what we can accomplish the next summer. And I remember Bill asked me in April, when we had this conversation, if there was anything that we didn't put on the list and why, and I explained that we prioritize the list by working with the facility teams and the principals based on the immediate issues, and that to which we know we can realistically do in the nine, eight, seven, these, the school, the summer that we actually have. So, the facility fund is reserved, and we can look it up, it was voted the year after we merged, so it would have been, I think, March 2018. Yes, the voters, how we can spend it and how we can reserve it. It is for capital improvements and upgrades, including grounds, so it's not specific just to the building. Some equipment is also covered in that, it does include some equipment, it doesn't ever include people, you know, services, can't include those type of things unless they're, obviously, construction services, but we can't buy personnel, supplies, those type of things. And I do also want to remind you that we had scheduled and postponed a conversation with the architects to look at the feasibility of a middle school at the Camberly property, and we postponed that, they will be coming in September, in September as well, to talk about that. And I just want to point out that that may change things here. What that is, is a feasibility study about constructing a sixth through eighth middle school, so that would obviously free up space here to also be repurposed. And what that might look like, you know, that's three or four steps ahead of where we are at.
Thank you.
Devin's current plan is based on his current and projected resources. He's not going to be putting into his plan what he doesn't have and has no way to absolutely ever pay for, is what my two cents would be as far as his plan. He does have a plan based on what he currently has, but, which my now elderly father used back in the 60s when he was here, a lot of that stuff is still there, I talked to him. Oh, yeah, I remember that, and, yeah, it just, it needs upgrades, it needs modernization.
Anyone else?
I have a question about the air handler, so there was a, these have a structure outside to hold the, is it the mechanics of the air handler, or is it the dust that comes out, a dust collector?
My understanding is the dust.
And we approved a $30,000 for that, does that include that structure on the outside of the building to handle that? It didn't sound like it did.
Yeah.
So, it seems like we need to at least approve some of these things that, you know, if we're going to spend $30,000 on an air handler, but you can't use it because you don't have the structure on the exterior building, it doesn't make sense to have.
He specifically said it was included, the $30,000 included that.
That, well, so the $30,000 that we have approved was based on conversations you've already had with Devin, and that's what he felt he needed. So, I have to say something very specific here to all of you, especially for the new board members, and I know you're not new, you've been here before, but there is a process to all of this. And the process is that if a teacher feels they need something, they need to start with their administrator. Their administrator is the principal, or Rich, or whoever they feel they need to go out to. From there, it goes to the facilities management, which right now is Steve Eaton, but is going to be Rich Vigu, which you heard his name tonight. And then, from there, there's conversations with Brenda, and all of that comes in. What we did a couple of meetings ago was approve $30,000 based on conversations with Devin and what he needed this summer for next year. We've also, if you look at that plan that we approved for later, there is $175,000 for Devin's program in years two or three, depending on when he's ready for it. What I heard tonight is he's not ready for any of that.
No, and I hear exactly what you're saying, but again, what he was talking sounded like he was not, there was no money for a building to house the air handler.
I think, well, so I think we have to go with what he's already approved, and I think, you know, if something comes up, then it can always come back to us and go, oh, we need to do X, Y, and Z, and they can do something. But at this point, I don't think this board should make a decision like this, because I don't think he's ready, and because it should really go through proper channels. That's just my, I'm going to put that out there to you, but, Barbara?
I'm just going to agree with what you're saying about the process that exists for getting these things approved. It does follow a channel, and it's not just our idea of thinking, oh, that's a good process, it's a process that exists for reasons outside of us, and it's a process that exists for every teacher in the district and every program in the district. And it seems that it would be unfair for us to privilege one program over another, when, again, to reiterate, the teacher's not asking us for that right now, he's telling us what he's doing, and it's an amazing program, and I learned so much tonight, and I'd never, I mean, I've seen him on Zoom, but I'd never seen him in person, it was great, funny guy, what a treasure he is, and same with Josh. Like, so grateful for this presentation, really, and it makes me very hopeful for what's coming for all of our students, and, but they're not asking for the things that are in this motion yet, so it's not our job to get out ahead of what teachers are saying they need. Our job is either way forward down the line in terms of bigger planning, or to be responsive to what is being asked of us, but not to think we should change what they're asking for. But I also wanted to wholeheartedly agree with what Natalie said, she said it beautifully, and thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
The administration doesn't sound like they like the motion. If they don't, what motion would they like, if any, and what should it cover?
May I?
Sure.
We have the motion right on, the recommended motion is right on your agenda. A motion to approve a percentage up to 100% of the 2022 year-end surplus for facility fund. If you wish to also throw an after-school program, you may, we don't feel that it's necessary. We don't feel that it's necessary to contribute to after-school program right now, because after-school has received quite a bit of ESSR fundings over the last couple of years, so it's healthy. So we recommend that you put the surplus into the facility fund. And as my memo said, you also, you have three options. You can do nothing, which means that you also cannot spend it. You're doing nothing, and it goes back to the voters in a year, and you'll need to make that up the year after. Or you could put it in either facility or after-school, or both facility, after, you could do some combination of those first two.
So what percentage would you plug into the blank?
100, no. Actually, we recommended that a percentage get carried forward, do nothing with, because we want to step down the cliff you're going to be facing.
Right. So we had a surplus in 2020, a nice big surplus in 2020, the beginning of COVID. And we agreed to spread it out over three years. So we applied $460,000 to the 21, 22, and next year's budget, 23. So that's good news and bad news. The good news is that reduces the amount that needs to be raised by taxes. The bad news is when you spend the surplus, you don't have it for the next year. So I, we recommend you consider, you know, up to half of that, 460, so say 230. Again, our estimate, as Jean very eloquently explained last week or last month, was, there's still just an estimate right now, right? The books haven't closed. Literally today was the last day for teachers, so there's still expenses happening. So up to 230, or half of that, do nothing with, and let that roll over to help us kind of step down from that surplus so that we don't feel a big increase. $230,000 is about two cents on the tax rate, so it will help with that. And then we'd recommend, as Jean said, putting any excess, all remaining, into the facility fund. And as she said, the after-school programs are great and wonderful resources, and they have been funded with ESSR funds, and they've also been able to tap into some special childcare COVID resources, which are, they're called ESSR.
And the building fund is healthy?
The building fund is healthy. I did give you those numbers last month.
It's after our $430,000 that we've approved, we have 1.6 left.
Thank you, Laurie.
You're welcome.
I have another question. We only have two reserve funds, is that right?
That's correct.
That's correct.
How do we create a new one?
You go to the voters.
During budget?
During your March election, you, so during the budget season, you choose to create one. It goes on, on the ballot for the voters to approve. You have to specifically define what it is for.
Right, so, because right now, we can't use those funds to pay our bus drivers and our paraeducators.
Correct.
So if we had a reserve fund that could be used for people, maybe it's something to consider later, but...
Right, but then I would caution you that money goes away and the people don't, so...
It would be like a bonus.
You really need stable funding for employees, not grants, not reserve money.
A reserve fund for equipment would be good.
Instead of a tax cliff, we would have it going down a hill, maybe.
Well, I think it was steps.
Steps. Let me ask the motion maker in a second if they would go with putting 50% in here.
I don't understand what you're saying.
I don't understand what you mean.
Change the motion.
You're asking for a friendly amendment?
What does it mean to say put 50% in here? What does that mean?
I don't know. That's why it's got a percentage here in the recommended motion.
50% of the surplus, you mean?
To the facilities fund, the rest back to the voters, is that what you're saying?
But he's got a motion on the table that has to be...
Well, he's asking for a friendly amendment, so he needs to figure out what his motion is to see if the friendly amendment is okay, and if it's not, then we'll...
In the meanwhile, can I have a turn to talk again?
Sure.
Okay, so I want to address primarily what Natalie said about my passion and so forth. Yeah, I'm passionate about this, but objectively, this is necessary. Objectively, this equipment is 60 and 50 years old, almost everything down there. Objectively, we don't have any tech and tech ed, except for a few expensive 3D printers that are, that are very popular. Tech ed is by nature capital-intensive. It has to be. And we haven't been spending the money. This board, previous boards, for 50 years, we haven't been spending the money. So I think it's a crisis, and I think it's something that, instead of saying, oh, we need further planning, we need this, we need that, we need to start acting. And we have had tonight specific requests that are unfunded for necessary things. Now, with Devin's permission, to clear up any qualms people might have about what's a facility and what isn't, I'm willing to drop the last one, number E, on the CNC router and metal lathe and those sorts of things. But everything else in here is a facilities, a building issue, or designed by an architect of this necessary structure for the, for the construction of a, a, a building to hold the, the vacuum system. $10,000 is not going to do that. I'm, I'm not a builder, but I'm quite certain that that's the case. B is necessary structural changes for storage, soundproofing, and mold abatement in the Muslamu classroom, which we heard about today that are unfunded. C is necessarily structural changes in the OV shop for classroom power management. You know, we had a power outage when I was in there, and the, it's just the, the system's a mess. The breaker was in the wrong room for, for, to fix that. And then the last one is the purchase of fire-rated welding doors and other necessary changes to create a suitable area sufficient for the use of OV's new welding equipment for, for the coming school year. I think we're in violation of our policy governance prerogative, not prerogative, our duty to, to provide equal education for all students by, by the decades of neglect in this class, that area, I mean, that classroom. I think, I think it's an equity issue. I mean, I, I've been down there all year, can't say for sure, but I don't believe I've seen a single member of the National Honor Society in that basement. These are kids who have, we are limiting their future by not providing them with the best possible tech ed education. I couldn't believe that more strongly.
Madam Chair, we've passed the curfew.
Actually, we started at 6:30, so we have until 8:30 for two hours.
Okay, well, I was searching for a friendly amendment so we can resolve this issue.
So Devin, are you willing to...
I have one, one more question. If we put half of it into facilities funds, and all of a sudden, this $30,000 that we put towards the air handler is not enough, can we pull that out of?
Well, they would cut, you, she would have to come back to the board, so yes.
He would have to come back to the board, or Brenda would come back to the board.
Brendan would come back to the board.
Or we didn't have enough to, to deal with this.
And when's the earliest that could happen?
Go ahead, Jean.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to suggest that if the board would like us to look into those mold issue, et cetera, and bring back information, that we'd be happy to do that. And we also could ask our attorney to provide a written formal opinion on what you can spend the money on.
I think with mold...
However, you need to act on this tonight or before June 30th. Otherwise, it is all going back to the voters, and there is no more decision to meet on, be made on the surplus.
Jen, you had your hand raised.
I was thinking about our policy of governing style and how we really should be thinking about the long-term impacts. And the reason I bring that up is because we, we're speaking, we're speaking about decisions that were being made by Steve Eaton. We're making, we're speaking about decisions that were made by people that aren't here to explain why those decisions were made, and we need to trust that those decisions were made with, with best, with the best intentions. Steven is an amazing person, and Rich Vig is, or Vig is an amazing person, and I think we need to trust that they consult with the right professionals, and they make these decisions, and they give guidance to those who come to them for guidance. So in this instance, I'm trusting those who are part of the decision-making before it came to us, that the, the facilities funds are being used for what are being, what's necessary, what is that risen to the top level. I've also worked in every school in this district, except for Barstow, and there's needs in every school. And I can speak to that wholeheartedly and passionately as well. But I think we need to trust those that are in the schools, following the processes in place to make those decisions.
I would also tell you, and Brenda, correct me if I'm wrong, that if for some reason you find out in July that it's not enough money, we could convene an emergency meeting to make sure that they have the appropriate funds that are necessary.
From the facilities reserve.
From the facilities reserve.
And that would be the same as you go down and find out about the molding and...
And we would come back to you.
Absolutely.
And we'd also go for emergency money in the state. There are things, if that's an issue, there are other avenues.
It seems to me this is the ideal time to do anything for tech ed at Otter Valley or do anything at any other school we have ideas about because of the funding that has come from the federal government for COVID relief.
Which we're actually going to tell you about some that we got.
Yeah, you, you were saying earlier that there's plenty of money for after-school, which is great, but now you can spend X amount of dollars somewhere else because now they're spending on after-school, so...
Right, so two other things is you do have money coming from ESSR funds, unexpected for some, I think it's HVAC, at OCA and at Lester and Whiting, that we just found out about this week, we were going to tell you about. And another piece of the administrative recommendations on how to spend the reserve fund is also based on capacity of work to be done during the summer. So if you significantly change that amount of work, we may not be able to comply anyway.
Yes.
I have a question, and then a follow-up statement, I think, depending on the answer to the question. So, I mean, we heard from two teachers, right? How many other unique programs similar to these two does Otter Valley currently have? Or are these the only two?
Those are probably the most unique, but there are a number of other programs. The art department needs some updated art equipment, kilns, you know, a number of different things. The theater department is always, you know, we just gave them an auditorium, but they're always needing more. The, there's an, an internship program. There's, and that's just Otter Valley. There's also, as Jen said, there's several schools. So again, the process is that during the fall, we meet, every single fall, we review what each school needs. We understand it's not an unlimited pot. We bring a recommendation to the budget, and that's when you would put, you could put in extra money in the budget, or you could also revisit the facilities fund at that time. If I may, though, what we need tonight is to know what you're going to do with the surplus. The facilities fund can come back at any time.
The reason why I was asking is just because I, I feel like even the tech centers are probably having a hard time keeping up with technology. Like, I mean, it's great that they're going to start a small engine program, but 10 years from now, I'm not sure small engines are going to be a thing. And if you look at, you know, the emissions results from a small two-stroke engine versus even a modern car, those, those engines are going to be gone because we have to.
Right.
Right? So, I, I mean, are we better off looking further into the future and saying, you know, we need a, you know, a, a battery course or, or some sort of technology course that's maybe something we haven't even thought of yet? So I, I think they're great programs for where we used to be and where we are right today. I, I would be afraid that we're not going to be able to keep up, because I don't think even more well-funded tech centers can keep up, because technology is just changing so fast.
And the tech centers actually have a regional advisory board who sits on that board. Kevin does. Used to be Barry. And new programs for the tech center has to go through a regional advisory board, and there needs to be some community experts in saying, this is what we need as we look towards the future. A pre-tech program at a local high school does not need to. Chair, how do we go forward to, so Bill made a friendly...
Suggestion.
Well, he hadn't finished framing his friendly suggestion. So I think what you wanted to say, maybe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that you kind of wanted to do what Brenda was talking about, which is that you would like to see up to $230,000 be left in the budget so that it goes forward to the voters, and anything beyond that 100% would go into the facilities fund.
I don't think that's what he said.
I don't think that's what he said.
I don't think, but that's maybe what, but that was what Brenda was saying. I wasn't sure if that was what you were trying to do.
And the 230 is the 50%.
Is the 50% of the 460. Yes. Is that, is that what you were trying to...
I am awesome.
Okay.
50% of the 460 to do what? To go forward to the voters?
We don't have the 460 anymore, so that's what you're saying, this is coming here.
Right, this is the last...
Well, we have it for 2023, right? So it's in the bank, if you will, to start July 1st, 2023.
But we don't have it for...
We don't have it for July 2024, but the budget will be building this all.
For this, yes.
So we're talking 50% going back to the voters.
230,000. Please say 230,000 if that's what you mean.
That's what I mean.
Okay.
I'm not interested in that friendly amendment.
Okay.
Devin, are you willing to modify the amendment that's on the floor to drop E so that we have everything that on there is pure facilities and pure immediate need?
Sure.
Okay, that's, so...
All right, so can you redo the, and then we're going to vote, because I think we're ready for that.
I moved to place this year's budget surplus in the facilities fund and to authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed $230,000 from, from funds presently in the facilities fund for: A, a design by an architect of a suitable structure adjacent to the school for the purpose of containing a modern shop vacuum system and for the construction of said structure by a bonded builder. B, necessary structural changes for storage, soundproofing, and mold abatement in the Muslamu classroom. We could say to be determined by an architect. C, necessary structural changes in the OV shop for classroom power management. D, the purchase of fire-rated welding shop doors and other necessary changes to create a suitable area sufficient for the use of OV's new welding equipment for the 2022-23 school year. That's, that's it in entirety.
Okay.
Do we need to amend that, though? Because didn't Jean already say...
Surely they need to withdraw their motion and then substitute what Kevin just read as a new, new motion.
Well, can we even do that?
Cleanest, cleanest way to do it.
But Jean already said that she was going to handle the, the mold, right?
Yeah.
You're going to look into that.
She said the board could instruct her to do so.
Well, they're, they're going to look into it, right?
Well, wait a minute, but this is his motion, so we have to go with what his motion is. So if you don't like the motion, just vote it down.
So do I need to withdraw the original one and substitute?
I think it would be cleaner if you withdraw the original motion with an agreement of your second, and then...
And then that motion that you just brought forward be the...
Yes, okay.
So you're going to email me that, right?
I already emailed it to you.
And it was just taking off.
You're just taking off E.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Brenda, is that just, is that all allowable?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so all of those in favor of Kevin's motion, please raise your hand. And all those against? Okay, so the motion fails. Is there another motion on the table?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, I don't want to do percentage, can I do money?
Yep.
I would like to make a motion that we put $200,000, I'm sorry, 200...
230?
260, 260.
30, 30, 230, 230, half of 460.
Yeah. I'm, I'm only going to give 200,000 back to the voters.
Okay.
260 to the facilities fund and 200 back to the voters.
Well, wait, you can't do it that way, because, so here, here's...
20% is 20%.
So here's the issue. Right now, we think that the surplus is $192,000. However, it's probably more because this is a conservative number, okay? So what she's trying to tell you is that what you want, the motion I think you're trying to make, and it could be wrong, so right here, come on, is that you would like to appropriate $230,000 or $200,000, whatever, to go back to the voters, and that the rest go into the facilities fund. Is that what you're trying to do? So you want 200,000...
So up to 200.
Up to 200,000.
Because it's an estimate, the first 200.
The first 200,000 into the facilities, or back to the voters, and everything else back into the facilities fund, nothing into the after-school program. Okay, is there a second to that?
Oh, seconded.
Okay.
Ask why the folks on this side of the table voted against the original motion, are your concerns satisfied with this motion?
I articulated why I was going to vote against that motion. The original motion that Kevin made?
So he was asking why they voted against the, the original motion, and I think it...
Not against the original motion, the substituted motion.
The second motion.
I voted no for the first motion because I want...
I voted no for the first motion because I want the, I don't like the specification of how the funds are being specified. I've been using specified specifically. I didn't like how they were being specifically spoken for. I want the facility funds to be determined by our facilities team.
Okay, that's a different issue, but it's a worthy issue.
I mean, if we.
Don't those teams have to work within the constraints of budgets?
Point of order, if I may. Are you discussing the current motion or former motion?
I think he's asking, yeah, so that, you're asking them about the former motion, but let's talk about this motion on the table.
But is he asking, though, because it was kind of a two-parter, right? There was the taking all of the excess funds and putting it into the facilities fund. And then there was all of the allotments, right? So we spent more than what our surplus is going to be this year for this coming summer on the facilities fund.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I could understand saying 230,000 back to the voters. That 230 might be a lot more valuable than our facilities fund. I don't know if that's what he was saying, but that's what I took it.
All right, so that's, that one, okay. So, other discussion, otherwise I would.
Can we repeat the motion?
Sure, so the motion on the floor is that $200,000 of the surplus would go back to the voters and any additional surplus, if any, would go into the facilities fund, 100%. Does that make sense?
And if it goes back to the voters, it'll be used?
It has to be used to reduce taxes.
Two cents, well, close to it. Okay. Any other questions?
The language includes up to 200,000.
The, the first 200,000 of any, of surplus is probably the best way to say it because we don't know exactly what the surplus is.
All right, so the first 200,000. Yep, go ahead.
Motion by Devin Fuller and seconded by, did Dr. Mathis make that one?
Yeah.
To place the first 200,000 of the surplus back to the voters and any overage to be placed in the facility fund.
I might suggest you say to carry over the first $200,000 into next year's budget to reduce the tax burden on the voters. Is that okay, Devin?
I think it's up to 200, I don't know whether it's up to or not.
Sure.
But anyway, it's a carryover, not a place.
All right, so are we ready to vote, or are there other questions?
I'm confused now. Is Devin's motion what Bill was looking for?
Okay, the previous motion died, and this is the new substitute amendment, and it's the only thing on the floor.
It's a new motion.
It's a new motion, complete new motion, yeah? And you agree with, you seconded it, you agree with it, okay.
In that case, I have a question for Devin. What's, what's your logic for?
Because I think that we need, it sounds to me that we need more money in facilities because of the problems that we're, because of the issues that all the schools have, including the tech program, which I thoroughly believe in. And I do think that we are, I think it's 2.1 of the policy governors that talks about making sure that all those students get what they need. And I feel like we are falling down in the tech program. However, Josh is not 100% prepared for all that money. I do feel like we are spending $30,000 on the air exchange, which is one of his big issues. We need to have that building created on the outside of the school. I'm hearing that if we need more money to do that, we can do that. And that way, we have the money in facilities to do it. And I think that's, I think that's the idea, that we put more money in the facilities because the schools need it, including Otter Valley, including the tech program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, are we ready to vote?
Ready.
All right, all those in favor of Devin's motion, which is to take the first $200,000 of any surplus and give it back to the voters and any additional surplus to go into our facilities fund, please raise your hand. And those against? Motion passes. Okay. All right, so let's go on to superintendent's report while we're right there.
Um, well, a lot of my superintendent's report was the use of the surplus funds and the technical center information. I am pleased to tell you that Vanessa B. Bell, Barbara, was run by sixth graders.
It's a beautiful thing.
Thank you, Dr. Mathis, for helping to get it to where it is now. It's not, it's not a done project, but it was able to be used at this graduation, and several people really appreciated that. We also do have some good news around, like I said earlier, we received a significant amount of money from ESER funds, particularly for us. It goes to Otter Creek Academy, Lester, and Lester is getting 45,000, Whiting is getting 40,000 for improving our HVAC systems. And the big news for tonight, dun, da, 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 da. Lester Water is now.
Let it be.
Potable, is that?
Potable.
Yes, it has been released for consumption, is actually what the email said.
I know.
I think it's been two years, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
That's great. So how often do they test? Just out of curiosity. No, that's great. Yay.
Honestly, I think it's monthly right now.
Should all go get a drink.
Yeah, go now, go.
There's improving student outcomes right there.
There you go.
All right, I will see you soon.
A little water.
Okay.
Bye, Padua. Happy summer.
Thank you.
Happy summer. Have some cake.
I, you know what, okay.
Yeah, thanks.
You've earned it, you deserve it.
All right, so.
Good, take two.
You're all set.
That's it, that's all I wanted to say.
I wanted to thank Dr. Mathis because as you, you've got the bell rolling and bell rolling on this. And I just wanted to ask if it would be possible for, if anyone has communicated to George Matthew and Steven Jupiter about the ringing of the bell, and if not, if that could happen, to thank them for their presentation. It was his suggestion of ringing it for sixth grade graduation that really, I mean, certainly sparked my interest in it and if there's any way to thank them, which is okay.
I have done that, but I'll be sure and do more of it. Meanwhile, the administration has grand plans for the Bell's future.
Excellent, excellent.
They decided that my plan was entirely too shabby. And I agreed with them, and so they're going to put together a better, the administration's going to put together a better design. And I see it on the green at Vanessa B. School.
Nice.
And I have to say, given the fact that the morning of graduation, Vicky Wells was still unsure whether it was going to.
It was raining downpour.
It was raining, and it wasn't quite ringable yet. And then the fact that she had to come up with the logistics and she gave a speech about this new tradition.
She did, it was very nice.
And then she got all the kids to go out and, I mean, it was, it was beautifully done. I really, you know, I commend her and all of the people who made it possible, all of the folks, Mr. Clay and other people who were there to make it happen, so, good job, thank you.
And no complaints, no noise complaints.
Well, there's something. All right, so we're going to move back to our board monitoring reports. I would like to get through as many of them as possible. We are going to defer 4.1 because nobody saw that yet. So we will defer that to September. Big trouble, better be ready.
We're ready, it's done.
Yeah, can't present because nobody's seen it. All right.
Good night, thank you both, have some cake.
Let's start with, let's go from bottom to top. 4.7, governance investments, that was Derek and me. We sent that out. I accidentally put it on an RNESU template instead of an OVUU one, I apologize for that. So if someone wants to make a motion to accept, then we can discuss.
Some move.
Okay, is there a second?
Natalie.
Perfect, Natalie. All right, any, so you had a chance to read it, any questions? I have to commend Derek, he did most of the legwork. I just typed it mostly.
I need to find the thing.
Uh-oh, he's lost it.
Especially because she's going from the back, so you should probably start from the back.
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah. I have it if you want to see it. Would that be faster for you? Actually, no.
Any discussion?
I'm still not seeing it. I don't know where it is.
4.7, it came out on its own.
Okay.
May I have a hard copy as well, then?
I have it actually, I'm not looking for an. Is it?
Yes. I printed them all.
I wonder if I brought it in.
Was it in the left? I don't, I don't have a copy to print for you. I have the policy, not the comments. Oh, right now, I think I've.
So who, who would the email have been from?
Linda. Let's see if I can.
If you forward it to me, I can print it.
My ISO friends is out of isolation.
Here it is, she sent it on June 13th.
Can you forward it to me?
And more?
Oh, thanks.
I haven't found the right one.
I don't think I can help you, but it seems like this.
I'm able to print to the printer. What date did you say?
I sent it on June 13th. Here it is. Forward to Jean.
Thank you. It's tricky because it's in those back-and-forth emails.
Yes, it is, yeah, so it was in the middle, so.
I finally did, but I just found it.
So we're just voting to accept these reports, is that correct?
Yep, that's right.
Move the question.
Okay, well, here it is now. So essentially, what governed, it was about, it was mainly about governing, making sure that we're cost-effective in that, that we have appropriate training and presentations.
What I ordered, I made a motion to move the question.
All right, so.
It's non-debatable, it has to have a second and a two-thirds vote to move the question.
So someone making a second?
Yeah, we did.
Who?
Who? Nobody said.
The motion?
No, the second, the second for the point of removing the question. No one made a second. I was just stating what it was about, that's all.
Well, it's one of those things, it's non-debatable.
So are you making the second?
No, if it does, because of the lack of a second, we can just vote on the main question.
All right, good, then anybody making the second? I'm not hearing it. Okay. So, now, main question. So, all of those in favor of approving 4.7, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Are you saying aye or nay over there?
Nay, I'm voting against it.
All right, so vote, so whose hand was yes? One, two, three, four, five, and who's against? One, two, so passes. All right.
My objection is because we hadn't had a chance to discuss this stuff closely, that's my thinking.
Oh, okay, fair enough. All right, 4.1, removing, 4.6, board policy committee. Oh, this was the one that Bill and I did, 4.6, board committee principles. Someone want to make a motion?
Some move.
Barbara, second?
Second.
Derek, seconding? Okay, so Bill, this was the one you and I did together where we were talking about committees and that we have, it's specific to the fact that we have a Hawk Hill Committee, we have a negotiations committee, and we did have a task force committee, which we talked about at length in there.
Yeah.
So, and yours was, you didn't like the fact that it was in the not, in the negative connotation.
Well, yes, again, going through all of this paper. The main thing I had is, and if you'll notice on the yellow copy, the yellow highlighted copy, which was available on the web.
Yeah. Yeah, I have that.
Okay, thank you. You go through that policy and there's six points to it, and there's 13 usages of, I shall not. That is not the way to manage anything, our foreboard to behave in such a negative kind of fashion. So I felt, and it was also very prescriptive in things. When you looked at it, it said, we're really not going to do committees, but committees can do a lot of good things, such as Hawk Hill, task force on facilities, negotiations, and the like. And for example, Derek has learned the finance stuff because he's in there looking at the bills as the finance committee, and it's getting new things that are being seen and looked at that need to be looked at, but which would otherwise not get the attention they deserve. And when you have areas of expertise, to not use them on a regular basis is not a good use of what the board should be doing and carrying out its responsibilities. So this was my concern with 4.7.
Six.
And 4.6?
Whatever.
Okay. Well, it does make, does make a difference, all right.
Well, you know, we can vote for both.
I would just say that the shall-nots actually provide you, from a legal standpoint, more ability to do things because it's saying specifically what you cannot do, which means if it's not listed, then you can do it, you can do it, so.
It's probably what saved us during COVID and not having to meet 3,000 times.
So it's saying you cannot do these things, but everything else is fair game.
That's how our board was able to pivot for COVID. We would not have been able to do that otherwise.
That's true, and that's the beauty of policy governance.
I think it prescribes and delimits too much.
You think it limits too much?
Yeah, it diminishes the board's authority in review, which can be against the law. And it shows everything down this very narrow channel, which doesn't allow flexibility on the sides. And I think that a lot of things that are done are done because they have some flexibility.
I have a different point of view.
And that's okay. So, any other discussion regarding this, the way we wrote it?
Yes, Bill, are you recommending we vote in favor of accepting the report or not?
I'm recommending we vote it down and rethink it in our end's discussion.
Are we voting down the policy or the report?
The report.
You want to vote down your own report?
So your report is inadequate, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that the report has a definition of what the board committee should be doing that is unacceptable.
You think that the policy itself is inadequate.
This is true.
Right.
We're not going to be voting on the policy, we're voting on your interpretation of it.
Interpretation.
Well, my interpretation is that, though we have nauseous committee structures and we should have, we have been successful in these three places, but that doesn't develop the concept of what we're after very well at all, in fact, not at all.
So what we should do is approve your report because you're, then we would acknowledge what you're saying. We would say, okay, we hear you, and we're going to approve your report. If we don't approve it, then we don't acknowledge what you've said.
We got to do it again.
Only if the motion is that specific.
It's, it doesn't need to be specific, we just approve your report written as is.
It's your report that was specific.
I really don't want to do that myself, but you're free to vote any way you can. What happens is things get forgotten and they don't, are not looked at. I think at some point in time, we need to look into the entire nine yards of all of these things.
I think we can all agree with you on that, that all of the policies need to be looked at.
And by approving that report, then we'll look into it.
Yes.
That's true. So that's, we're going to lead us into the retreat if we get through this so that we can go move on. Go, Evan.
If we would, who made the motion?
Barbara made the motion and Derek.
Would you be, accept a friendly amendment that would save on the provision that we review the, what do we call these things anyway?
Policies.
Policies.
Governance, review, review all of the policies.
Well, we're specific.
We have to review it every year anyway.
We're specific to this one, but it's part of our process that we review each of these policies at least annually.
This is the report, but it's not the policy, right?
Correct, we're reviewing the policy with that report.
The policy is on the left-hand side, and then our reasonable. The policy is on the left-hand side, and then our reasonable interpretation is in the middle, and then on the left, on the right-hand side, is how we did or did not follow that policy.
So when would we actually be voting on amending these policies on the basis of these reports?
Yes, that's my question.
Okay, so I can answer that one. So my plan for the retreat in August is that we are going to dive into our ends, because we've talked about this a few times in the last few months, that our ends are not quantitative, that there is no way to prove that what is in there is how kids are graduating from Otter Valley, or, or that kids can, are able to do any of that stuff. So, in talking with Kristen, we will get together for our retreat, and we will dive into those ends. She will bring information as to all of the state standards, and then we can decide what we want in our ends, so that she can then report out to us on one of them, hopefully every month or every other month, to show whether or not we are actually progressing in the right direction, or if we're even on the map.
The preceding, the question is, is are these the right things to...
Well, right, well, so it's all part of that, so yes, so I mean, but, but we will deconstruct our ends, we will look at all of those ends and make sure that, you know, one of the ends, I think, needs to be in there for argument's sake, is that all second graders will be reading on grade level by the end of second grade. Because after second grade, they're learning to read, they're not, or they're learning, they're reading to learn, not the other way around. And so otherwise, they're at a deficit, as soon as they hit third grade, if they can't read well. So that's one of those parameters that we want to make sure our kids can do. Maybe there's something in fifth grade, I have no idea what, that kids need to be able to do before they move on to sixth grade, so that they can continue on their trajectory to graduation. I don't know, but, you know...
That's a bigger discussion.
Right, but that's part of the ends, so that's what we're going to discuss at our retreat.
And if we... How about we discuss how we revise these policies?
Well, so, oh, right, so that was the part I forgot. So, we cannot really revise the policy until we revise the ends, because everything reveres back to the ends.
The ends are the most important, yeah.
So if we know what the ends are, because if you remember at the last board meeting, Jeremy said, we can't change this because it refers to the ends, the ends, blah, 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 I don't remember all of it. Anyway, so if we were to change the ends, we can then go back through all of our policies, because we're going to have to do it anyway.
And the next year, doing...
You got it.
...the development.
Yep.
That, that doesn't necessarily follow, I mean, we could still keep the same ends and say, our policies are not getting us toward those ends, we need to change the policies. You don't have to modify the ends first to be able to change the policies. If, you know, we've got these ends of, you know, having wonderful students, we want to retain those.
So here's the thing, though, we need to start talking about student outcomes, and if we don't start talking about student outcomes, when are we going to start talking about student outcomes? And the ends are how we know what student outcomes are. And then we can determine whether or not the policies are, are supporting that, and if they're not, then we'll change them, and if they are, great.
I'm not sure that the ends policies themselves have a connection with the board job description.
Well, the ends are what our, our goal is, I mean, that...
I know, but I'm just saying that, are we making a difference here? Is what the board's doing making a difference for kids?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're doing, and so our ends direct what we tell the superintendent to do.
That makes total sense.
So it sounds to me like August's retreat is going to be a long...
It won't be arduous, no.
Drawn-out retreat, because you're going to change the ends and then also change policies to reset them.
Well, we're not, we're not going to change the policies at the meeting, that would, that would take way too much time. But if we can change the ends, we can definitely talk about the ends and what makes sense.
Then we will have, have to deal with the connection, I don't think it's there, but that's for a longish discussion.
Great, so can we get back to 4.6?
What's the motion?
The motion is to approve 4.6.
The report.
The report.
To approve this report that you, and you submitted to us.
Yep. He, he did submit his own that said he didn't like the not, you know, the second...
The question's removed.
Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, ready to vote? No, we're ready to vote.
Okay.
All right, all those in favor of approving 4.6, please...
Five to two, what? I already voted.
Oh, no, we just, he moved the question.
I was voting, I'm moving the question.
So all those in favor of approving 4.6, please raise your hand.
Aye.
All right, those opposed?
I can't keep that.
Bill, great, all right, 4.6 is approved. Phew, 4.2, board job description.
Motion to approve.
Okay, who is seconding it?
Second.
Okay, discussion about 4.2, which was the board job description, which was done by Becky and Eric, Becky sent it to us, Melinda sent it to us at the end of the last meeting, two weeks ago. Any discussion?
I think you did an excellent job in there, looks like there's a lot of room for improvement in that, so.
All right, that's awesome. Bill?
Same kind of thing, what does it mean to be a liaison to these people, and how do we liaise?
You're funny.
That's a really good question.
I mean, I, I think it's a nonsense statement.
All right, but if we can, can we just, can we just talk about the report itself, and we'll talk about the policy later?
The report is an interpretation, what Bill's asking is an interpretation, so ideally, what you need to ask yourself is, does the report identify that, that concern that Bill brought up? Because then the interpretation, you know, or is it a reasonable interpretation that's in there? It's not about the policy, it's about the interpretation, and what Bill's asking is an interpretation question, what does it mean?
Any questions?
Yeah, what does it mean?
Well, we're not answering it now.
No, you're not answering, you read the reasonable interpretation that Becky came up with, and Eric.
I'm not so sure they met twice per month, does a thing about being an informed agent.
Where are we now, which is 4.7?
We're 4.2.
Thank you.
Do you want to know if they met twice a month?
We, we met two weeks ago, and it was available two weeks ago, but it came on, on Monday, it hadn't been done prior, so maybe that's what he's talking about. So is there any other discussion on 4.2? So, all those in favor of 4.2, please raise your hand. All those against? Okay, one, five to two. Six to two. Okay, 4.2, so, 4.5, board members' code of conduct, this was Derek and Kevin's from the 5-4 meeting. Something that I learned this week, if you don't, do you mind if I, because I, I brought it to your attention?
Yeah.
What, um, there had been discussion about the code of conduct, 4.5, that there was all of this conflict of interest stuff in there. So what I learned in the last two weeks is that we also have an RNESU policy that is a code of, or a conflict of interest, a policy. So my suggestion, and it doesn't have to be done tonight, but my suggestion is, is that anything related to conflict of interest in this 4.5 policy be removed, because we already have the RNESU policy.
I think that's a good conversation to have with AJ.
Okay.
I'm not sure that it's appropriate to do that, but maybe it's in reverse.
Okay.
I, I've given some thought to it.
Yep.
Also, if I could.
That's a policy change, though, and we're not talking about policy change.
That's true, we could talk about it, you know, later, so, yeah.
Um, I would, I was, we've covered, we've covered this a lot, we started in April talking about this, and we got into some discussions about last time, about separating out code of conduct from conflict of interest, and, and, and I apologize for not being more thorough in, in doing the homework on this, and, and finding this policy, the similar policy in the Rutland Northeast policy work, policy manual, so to speak, that it addresses conflict of interest and other board conduct issues. And given that this is a supervisory union-wide policy that already covers three boards, I don't think we should work on this any further, and, and I recommend that our discussions on 4.5 be forwarded to the RNESU board to be considered the next time that they do a policy review of, of this kind of policy.
So you're saying leave the...
I don't think we need to spend any more time on it.
Okay.
We've, we've talked about it a lot, and we...
I'm a little confused again. So you're saying there's an RNESU board policy on all code of conduct and not just conflict of interest?
It's just conflict of interest.
It's a similar, no, it's a similar, it's a similar policy. And the work that we've done, I mean, it applies, because it's a Rutland Northeast supervisory union policy, it applies across the three boards.
So it has the same contradictions and kind of, carrying two loads that, that this one does, the same kind of confused structure that this one does?
Potentially, and so I think we've already done a lot of the work and discussions about it, we should hand that work off to them for consideration when they do their next review of that policy, and we don't need to deal with it.
Oh, so you're passing the buck.
I'm confused, we have two competing policies, is that what we're saying?
So there's an RNESU policy on co, conflict of interest, because I believe it is required, is it required by law? It's required by law, so that's why RNESU has it. There is also 4.5 in our policies that talks to code of conduct and conflict of interest is embedded in that one, so...
So any reference to conflict of interest should be referenced to the RNESU policy.
Or, or you can remove that one and build it in, that's also possible, but, we can look at it.
But it's better to reference something that is...
And the RNESU one applies to us and our behaviors.
Yes, yep. Yep.
I'm not so sure, I think we should have some kind of review of the Rutland Northeast policy to see that it comports with the issues.
Well, RNESU can do that, actually, that's a great, I will look at, RNESU was looking for stuff to do at their retreat, we will bring that up at...
Wouldn't it be good for us to review it? And then, I mean, we can always add to it, right?
Right, well, so RNESU starts the process, and then it comes to you, and then it goes back to RNESU.
What I'm saying is, we, we can, we have the RNESU policy, we refer to that policy, but if there are things that we want to add to it for our own board...
Oh, sure.
We have the ability to do that.
You'd put it into this 4.5 policy, yes. Okay? All right, so I guess we're tabling that one again. Okay. Is that okay with the people who made the motion?
I don't remember who made the motion.
I don't think...
Oh, we didn't even get to that part? All right, well, then, good, then we're, we did it by consensus, awesome. All right, so our next meeting is Wednesday, August 17th, here, 5 o'clock, it's 5 o'clock, not 6.
I'm sorry, say it again.
August 17th, board retreat, here, 5 o'clock. It will be three to four hours. We will have some facilitators here, we will be talking about ends, we will be meeting with our new superintendent. Okay? If there is a reason for us to meet sometime in the summer, we will email, okay? Otherwise, if everyone is okay with adjourning at 8:45, or 8:50, actually, you can signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and before we leave, just one more time, thank you, Jean, for all your years of service, we are going to miss you. Okay, you're leaving us in a good spot, though.
Thank you.
This is your last board meeting.
I have Barstow, so my last Otter Valley, but I have Barstow on Monday.
But with this group, I mean...
I know, right? You're going to miss this group.
I am, I'm going to miss this group.